Ninth, twenty twenty-three. I call tonight's organizational meeting to order. Mr. Saluka, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. King.
Here.
Mr. Eisen.
Here.
Ms. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mrs. Daniels.
Here.
Can I have a motion to adopt this evening's agenda, please? Second. Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas, second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Mr. Eisen.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes. At this time, is the portion of our agenda for nominations for board president? Are there any nominations this evening?
Madam President, I would like to make a nomination.
Ms. Thomas?
I would like to nominate Michelle Daniels for president.
Is there any other nominations this evening? If there's no other nominations, the presiding parent, president, asks for a motion to close the nominations. Can I have a motion to close the nominations of Ashley Thomas nominating Michelle Daniels for president?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Thomas, for the nomination and the opportunity to be able to serve the Garfield High City School District again as president. At this time, we're going to close the nomination for board president. And at this time, we're going to have the election of the board president nomination of Michelle Daniels. Can I have a motion?
We don't, we don't need the motion on just all in favor. I mean, it's just, it's unanimous because.
All in favor say?
Yeah, because you closed the nominations, I think it's just already, yeah, there's nobody else that was nominated, so there's no form of election that's needed. Like we do in the Oval Office, yes. From here, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I'm Michelle Daniels.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As president for the said Garfield High City School District Board of Education.
As president of the said Garfield High City School District Board of Education.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you. I would just like to thank my board for entrusting me with the duty of the president of the Garfield High City School District. Again, I take this as an honor and I'm humbled, and I'm looking forward to leading collectively with my fellow board members. The president is just a designation to take the heat and run the meetings, but as a board, we do this work together and collectively. And we're not just one board member, but we're a board as a whole that has the same passion and compassion to do what's best for the students of the Garfield High City School District. So thank you, guys. At this time, we're going to have the nomination for, for vice president. Do we have any nominations at this time? I would like to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Ms. King, Mylette King. Are there any other nominations this evening? If there's no other nominations, Mylette King was nominated by Michelle Daniels for Vice President of the Garfield High City School District. Can I have a motion to accept the nomination?
Close nominations.
Can I have a motion to close the nominations? Second. And can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, we're going to have the oath of office for Ms. King as a Garfield High City School District Board of Education for twenty twenty-three. Congratulations, Ms. King. Thank you.
Raise your right hand, Ms. King. I state your name.
I'm Mylette King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially depart my duties.
As vice president for the said Garfield High City School District.
As vice president of the, of said Garfield High City School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance, during the continuance in said office.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. As Michelle said, I also look forward to continuing to serve in this role and work alongside. To move forward with our new superintendent, really new board, and unfortunately, our new treasurer. But I do look forward to what's to come in. School District. I think it's going to be a great year. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments at this time regarding nominations? Congratulations. You guys did an amazing job. Thank you, Ms. King. At this time, we're going to move to the area of our agenda where we approve the board meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three. As you see, that some dates have been presented based upon our normal schedule of the every third Monday. But we do have a few dates that we need to figure out for the month of January, because my, January and February, because my assumption is we must not be open on those days. Or there must be holidays. So the first date that we need to establish is our January date. I would like to propose that we schedule that board meeting for Tuesday, January seventeenth. Is there any discussion relative to that day? Does that date work for everyone? Mr. Eisen? Ms. King? Yes. Yes, Morrison? Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
So our January meeting will be set for Janu-, our regular board meeting will be set for January seventeenth, and then February. Our normal meeting would have been the twentieth, that's President's Day. So are we okay with having our meeting on that Tuesday, February twenty-first? Ms. Thomas, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King, does that date work?
Um, I have a conflict, but it's early enough that I can do some maneuvering.
Okay. And if we find that it is conflicting or we need to change it, we have enough time to make that.
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, great. Mr. Eisen?
I'm okay with February twenty-first. I was looking at my schedule. I do have a conflict with January seventeenth.
Okay.
Is there another date that works for everyone? Possible. If not, then I can make it work.
Nope, that's why we have this discussion. So is there another day during that week that works for everyone, or is the twenty-third too late? There's no school on the twenty-third. And I have plans. But yes, so that week, I'm gonna say that week could be too late, because we do need to meet with finding leaders during the week of the sixteenth. They were going to, on the seventeenth present to the Board of Education, their recommendations for the interviews. And Time is of the Essence spoke with us today, so we don't want to push them. It, it will not be in the best interest of that area of business for us to push that into the next week. So will the sixteen, seventeen work? Are you able to make it work?
Okay.
Are there any other dates? We have March twentieth, April seventeenth, May fifteenth, June nineteenth, July seventeenth, August twenty-first.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
June nineteenth is a federal holiday.
Thank you. So I would recommend that we move our general meeting to June twentieth. Does that work for everyone? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Patton. July seventeenth. August twenty-first. September eighteenth. October sixteenth. November twentieth. And December eighteenth, that's what we have. Scheduled as our regular board meetings and our work sessions, we do not schedule at this organizational meeting because they're optional. We schedule those as needed. With the assumption of if we do need one, it'll be the second week of the month where possible. And six P M continues to work for the board as the start of our meetings. So can I have a motion to adopt the Board of Education regular board meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three as discussed? So moved. Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, can I have a motion to establish the Board Member Service Fund in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars? This is a typo. You won't give us that much out on your way out?
Well, that's the maximum by law. That's why we put that amount in.
No, but you see that at halftime. We get that much?
Yeah, we're still at one zero, missing for twenty million, so okay. Thought like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. We'll take it. So establish Board Member Service Fund in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three. So moved. Second. And is there any discussion? I'll, just since we have this on agenda right now, just could you give us an overview exactly what we use our Board Member Service Fund for?
Most of it's used for professional development.
Okay.
That's, you know, for board members to go to different conferences around and attend meetings such as OSBA. Some of the leadership meetings you've been attending and some of the, all the, the other COSB, I think it's COSB events and regional meetings. So it's mostly for professional development. It's, it's really for, in any type of materials to help board members be better board members. Let's just, you know, do that and keep up the, come up to speed with all the different things that are affecting the boards and education process here in Garfield Heights.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Saluka. We have a fair, Mr. Eisen also wanted to make sure that is exactly what we realized. This fund for, and then it's always great for us to have a refresher for making a decision on these matters. Mr. Saluka, that was, is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, we're going to do the appointment to the Ohio and the Na-, and National School Board Association's conventions for twenty twenty-three. Is there anyone that is interested in being the delegate for both the Ohio and National School Board Association convention for the year of twenty twenty-three?
Madam President?
Ms. King?
I would like to remain delegate for the Ohio and the National School Board Association.
Is there any objection? I was gonna be my nudging anyhow, because you have done a great job with communicating with desires and the things that align with our school district's interests and communicating those themes on behalf of us and sitting in the meetings and making sure you bring us back all the information. So we appreciate your service to the board in that capacity. You're welcome. Can I have a motion to accept the appointment of Ms. King as the delegate for the Ohio National School Board Association conventions for twenty twenty-three?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, we will do the appointment of representatives and liaisons for the Garfield High City School District. So the first one is our wellness liaison. Madam President, I would like to continue to be, to serve as the wellness liaison. Is there any objections to Ms. Morrison's continuation of serving as the wellness liaison? All right, if there's no exact objections, the next one is the community and family engagement liaison. Is there anyone that would like to serve on that this time?
Madam President, I would like to serve on the community and family engagement.
Is there any objection to Mr. Eisen serving as the community and family engagement liaison on behalf of the Garfield High City School Board of Education? All right, if there's no objection, at this time, we need a legislative liaison that serves as the legislative liaison to the OSBA.
Madam President, I would like to give opportunity to serve as the liaison, legislative liaison and legislative liaison to OSBA.
Is there any objections or any discussion relative to that?
I, I do have.
Yes, I should have a question.
Between the legislative liaison and then our legislative committee, does the same person also sit on that committee as part of the liaison role? What's the, the difference between the liaison, legislative liaison and legislative committee?
I would like for you to figure that out as you sit as the chairperson of the legislative committee. Because I, it would. Well, usually the liaison for OSBA just gets the information and the feedback correct, and it's a portion of when we go to Capitol Conference is where, just like your, the liaison.
Yeah, that was the.
But there's a legislative component to it, too. So it's, it's the OSBA liaison position, and usually whoever's on the legislative committee is also our liaison for OSBA. So would you be interested in being one?
Well, yes for C, because I think that's what I was doing already, was the legislative liaison. I was the, the board delegate which made me the legislative liaison, because I sat in on the legislative. So, uh, yes.
Are you interested in D? To connect that?
Yes, I think that would, that would help, just make it a smooth transition. So information coming down would go right to the committee to make recommendations to the board.
Absolutely, and you have done a great job over this last year, even just presenting resolutions for the board to vote on as it relates to legislative priorities. So I think, I think it'd be great to have you connected directly to the legislative committee. So we're doing the legislative committee, and Ms. King, to stand corrected, you have an interest in serving on that committee also, correct?
Yes.
And we need another board member, which we usually can be co as the board president. So that'll be myself, co-chair. The next area is our finance committee. Is there interest in our finance committee?
Madam President, I am interested in serving on the finance committee.
And I'll serve as co-chair as the board president.
And our policy committee.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Thomas? I would like to express interest in the policy committee.
Yeah, Ms. Thomas? And I'll serve as board president as the co-chair. So I'm asking for a motion for the board to accept my appointment of Ms. Morrison as the wellness liaison, Mr. Eisen as the community and family engagement liaison, Ms. King to serve as the legislative liaison to OSBA, for Ms. King to serve as, on the legislative committee along with myself, Michelle Daniels, for Ms. Morrison to serve on the finance committee along with myself, Michelle Daniels, and for Ms. Thomas to serve on the policy committee along with myself, Ms. Daniels. Can I have a motion, please? And a second to the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, can I have roll call? Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and that was second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
I think it was Ms. King.
I'm sorry, yep.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, can I have a motion to authorize the treasurer to make investments with active funds as they become available?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Can you explain just a little bit what that motion is about, Mr. Saluka?
It just, it allows me, if we have any extra funds, to make the investments. And I provide an investment report to the board as part of the board financial, so that gives you a breakdown. But it's, it's so that we can maximize any extra money that we have, that we don't need right away for cash flows and allows me to put it into short-term investments as allowed by law. So it just give me the authorization to do that. And active funds are, are funds that right now are checking funds, and those funds, if we have any extra, we, we put them into, let's just say, Agency Note Star Ohio and some other government-backed investment vehicles. This is just allows me the latitude to do that. And pick the right investments to maximize any extra funds we have on hand until such time as we need them for the cash flows.
Thank you, Mr. Saluka. Is there any questions or discussion relative to that item? If there's no questions or discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, can I have a motion to approve item number four point five, appointment of temporary personnel? And that's a motion to authorize the superintendent to employ temporary personnel as is needed for emergency situations. Such appointment to be presented for approval by the board at the next regular meeting.
Second.
And is there any discussion? Can we get a small overview of what this signifies for the district?
There, there are certain situations, and, and Dr. Reynolds, as, as we have vacancies, it allows Dr. Reynolds to fill that vacancy right away. So we don't lose any continuity of service. But what ends up, you know, being able to do that, so we can maintain our same staffing levels, but then before anyone gets paid, they have to get brought up before the board for approval. But it does allow for continuity services, and, and Mr. Patton can address that a little bit farther, too. As there are times that, that, you know, we need to hire, and we need to get somebody either in a classroom, drive a bus, in the cafeteria, and the board meeting might be a couple of weeks down the road, but we need to fill that vacancy. It allows Dr. Reynolds to be able to get that person in, get them to work, and then approval at a later date. So rather than wait that, that timeframe, that there's a, a couple of weeks there, just gives them the authority to do that.
And this indication is make, that staff member is made aware of that, that there, you know, say we hire somebody after a board meeting that gives us the time and say. say we hire somebody after a board meeting, that gives us the time and say, well, we can bring you on at this such and such date, but you want to be approved and paid if the board approves. Such and such date.
So this is just temp, an employee is considered, is considered temporary employment until we approve the actual contract or, or the terms of employment?
Exactly.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Mr. Suluca, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, can I have a motion to approve legal firm representation, a motion to approve the following legal counsel firms to represent the district on an as-needed basis. And that's Peters, Kaleo, and Marke, Marke...
Markekus.
Markekus, Squire, Patton Boggs, Riley Law Firm, and Weston Hurd. So move. Second. Any discussion?
Just, just to point out a few things here. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there. Peters, Kaleo, and Markekus, they do our property tax appeals. So many files for a reduction, or will file for an increase. Squire Patton Boggs does all of our debt financing. Riley Law does our, all our construction law. And West, Western, Weston Hurd is the, our main legal firm. That is the firm, Barrett Johnson, and his support staff who moved from Walter Haberfield to Weston Hurd.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, why is it that firm doesn't like, yeah, they, their whole education group moved from Walter Haberfield to Weston Hurd, as Walter Haberfield was moving in a different direction. And he felt that they weren't going to support the service that they, that group was providing to schools. So Weston Hurd took them on. And for us, the benefit is that we still have the same group of lawyers. Continually the same team, it's just a different firm. We provide the same services.
Same rate?
Um, I think same rate. And that's the other reason they're moving, because I think Walter Haberfield wanted to raise rates, and they weren't willing to do that.
Is Weston Hurd local?
Yes, downtown Cleveland.
And a Columbus office.
And did we, we didn't have a contract, any non-compete or anything with, when we looked at terms?
No.
And we were done with our contract?
We were done with our, well, contract was on an ongoing basis and billed that, that they were billing as they went. We paid off all of our old Walter Haberfield. We signed a release to have all of our records moved from Walter Haberfield over to this, with this group, to Weston Hurd. So they still have all of our records in the background.
When did we do this?
Um, this, they changed after the first of the year here. You know, they just changed.
That was, um, any other discussion on that matter? And at any time, even though we're voting on this today, at any time, if the board deems necessary and we need to change counsel for any reason or bring on additional counsel for specialized issues, we're able to, or are we locked into term contracts with these attorney firms, or is it just as needed?
As needed. We don't, we're not locked into any contracts here with an as-needed basis. So we're approving them. If we need to approve additional firms, or if we decide not to do any business with, with any of these firms, we just would not do any business or call them in to do anything. So. I mean, if, if we add a law firm, we probably would have, the board would have to take approval to add this law firm to the list of law, law firms to do business with on an as-needed basis. At a future date.
Is the firm's name Weston Hurd?
Yes, Weston, it's Weston Hurd, yeah. I think it serves an R there, or it should have been an N.
W E S T O.
Typo by yours truly.
I just, I'm okay with moving forward with it as is. But I wish we would have kind of been notified ahead of time, just in case we had additional questions of the firm as a whole. I know the same attorneys are going over, but I don't know if this firm provides us with certain things like the monthly newsletters, some of the, you know, I'm not sure if we're getting everything that Walter Haberfield provides, provided as a firm. But I do appreciate having an opportunity to have the continuity of services with the attorney. But it would have been more beneficial if I just would have had.
If I, if I may make a suggestion, maybe we could have Eric come in at the next work session and allay the board's fears and talk about what the change looks like and just still the type of services that they're providing and this group's going to provide under the new name.
Yeah, absolutely. Because this is the board's attorney, so I would want to know what exactly, I know it's the same attorneys, but I do understand the legal field, too. The same attorneys does not mean the same logistics and everything that we were offering. It may be a better off deal for us, but nobody...
Yeah, I think it's a...
What we've been told is that the only difference is the name. There's the same newsletters, everything that they are, the whole legal team that was with Walter Haberfield moved to Weston Hurd. So that, the special ed, the F and L A attorneys, all the legal attorneys. The only thing difference is the continuation, continuation of the name. But we will make sure that Eric comes and presents that to the board at the next work session in, in February.
Yeah, well, Weston Hurd and Walter Haberfield is two different firms. So we probably get the same service, but I'm just saying, I'm just... That's all. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, we're going with that, the tax budget hearing for the Garfield High City School District for 2023, Mr. Suluca?
Yes, I gave everyone a copy of the, the tax budget. And I think the biggest one I want to point out is basically page two. This is a requirement under state law that we need to tell the county auditor, that's not a county auditor anymore, the county fiscal officer, that they need to assess and collect all of the taxes that are due the Garfield High City School District. So what this does is it breaks down all of our levies, the Schedule I and the maximum rate authorized for each of these levies. And we're telling the county fiscal officer that he needs to, or she needs to collect all of the millage that here. And we're showing the basis, and we call it the needs budget. And we're showing the, the amount requested of budget commission. And we're demonstrating that we need all of that money. This is a, um, this is based on a, this, the whole tax budget is based on a calendar year. This is a requirement of the Ohio Revised Code. It's been in place forever. Unfortunately, for schools, we're on a fiscal year basis. But this is a calendar year tax budget in the, you know, by law. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things. We have three emergency levies, and the millage rate is based on dollar amount that was passed by the community and the citizens. And so we're assessing the, the rate authorized to collect that dollar amount here. Um, and I'm using the full, what's last, millage. And the county fiscal officer usually, and what ends up happening in May is he'll put a new tax rate in and have the board approve. But right now, what the, the current tax rates are for the emergency, I want him to assess and collect, tell him that we need all that. Um, the bond retirement, this is what's coming due in calendar year 24. So we're telling, this is the millage we need to pay off the bonded debt in calendar year 24. The permanent improvement, we're doing the full billage that was voted on by the community, even though it's House Bill 920. And it's really the effective rate, not the voted rate. But I'm putting the whole voted rate in there to show, because the effective rate change is based on collection rates and also based on the evaluation. So this, this really, the Schedule I is the most important schedule. It's telling the county fiscal officer to collect everything that's coming to us. The next schedule is just a summary of all the funds. It really does not mean anything. Why they're requiring us to do this schedule is, it's, once again, I'm going to just say it did not be politically correct. It's an antiquated, uh, system. So they require this, but, um, go from there. Um, really, then the next schedule, Schedule III, we have no unvoted general obligation debt. Uh, we do have voted debt outside the 10 mil limit. These are the three refunding bond issues that we have, that the community voted on back in 2002 and 2004. And we've since refunded those to get a better interest rate. So you can see what the principle is outstanding at the beginning of calendar year 24. And that's the debt service that we need to pay off during that year. So the county fiscal officer knows just how much millage to assess to make sure that we have collections. Now, you're going to see, and I'm going to point this out, on Schedule I, you could see that the amount that we're requesting for, um, the assessment, 8.8, 1.2. If you add those two together, it, it, it almost comes to like 3.9 million, but the outstanding debt is on Schedule IV. The outstanding debt is 4.4 million. So we know we're coming up short. We have money in the balance. So we're telling the county fiscal officer, what do you want to do? Do you want to raise the millage, which we don't want? Or do we want to pay down the balance in the bond retirement fund? That's up to him to determine. The big thing, though, is based on assessed valuation. So he has, this is based on the new valuations that we have. And we'll see what he wants to do when he puts in the tax rates for approval in May. So it's going to be interesting to see, um, just how much that we're going to be looking at there. But that's basically what this tax budget is doing. It's, it's telling the county fiscal officer, there is a need there for you to assess and collect all the millage that's coming due to the Garfield High City Schools.
And we are back on track with the auditor in terms of, with that new assessment, remember he wasn't collecting?
Well, that's what, that's, that's, that was the issue. We are back on track, and he, he lowered it significantly for this year. When you kind of hear people's tax bills kind of went down. He over-assessed the millage last year, so he brought it back in line for this year. I'm not sure where he needs to fall out for next year. But I know our assessed valuation went up a little bit this year. And I'll put this in a, a memo to the board in January here on the, the changes to the valuation and the millage rates. Um, but yeah, he'll need to take a look at that again and see where we fall out, and then just how much we're going to assess the millage. I think the millage for, I'm just going to say this, the millage for, because our assessed valuation went up a little bit, the millage for our emergency levies might drop down a little bit more as housing market values have increased. That, I'll be told, I think he's going to raise the millage rates for a little bit. And I don't know for sure, but I think he's going to raise it for the debt service payment. But what we need to watch out for, it needs to be a wash. So is not to, with everything else going on and what we're going to talk about up in the, the work session, we don't want to make sure that he raises millage and just keeps the other one, because then that'll be an increase in taxes, and we don't want to send that message right now. So we'll have to be on the lookout for that. So I think he's going to lower the millage for, he should lower the millage a little bit for emergencies. He might need to, to raise it for the bond retirement payment of debt service. But overall, millage rates for the, the community should remain the same. That, that's my anticipation come the tax rate resolution in May, April. I'm sorry, it's going to probably be April, mid-April, late-April. So that's what we're going to be looking at. And I will verify that with him before I go, to make sure what he's looking at after we send this in. And kind of to, uh, put that forward, that we don't want to see any increase in any millage. We could see some decreases, but if there needs to be an increase, we need to offset that with a decrease somewhere else. I think it's going to be an emergency in the collections.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Is there any questions? If there's no questions, at this time, I am asking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 202301, a resolution to approve the 2023-2024 tax budget as presented. So move. Second. That was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can I roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting? So move. Second. That was moved by Ms. King, second by Ms. Morrison. Can I roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Organizational meeting adjourned. And at this time, I would like to call to order today's Garfield High City School District Special Board Meeting Work Session. Today is Monday, January 9th, 2023. I call this meeting to order. Mr. Suluca, can I roll call for the Special Board Meeting slash Work Session?
Yes. Ms. King?
Here.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Daniels?
Here. At this time, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda of the Special Board Meeting and Work Session for this evening?
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? That was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen? Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
The first item on our agenda today is a resolution determining to proceed with submitting to the electors of the school district the single question of the issuance of school improvement bond in the aggregated principal amount of $19,500,000 for the purposes of constructing, furnishing, equipping, renovating, rehabilitating, remodeling, adding to, and otherwise improving school district buildings and facilities, and clearing, equipping, and otherwise improving sites for the, for those school district buildings and facilities. And the levy of an additional tax of 8.60 mils to provide funds for the acquisition, construction, enlargement, renovation, and financing of general permanent improvements to the electors of the school district pursuant to Section 5705.218 of the Ohio Revised Code. At this time, can I have a motion to adopt the resolution as titled? So move. Second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas. Can I roll call please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, can I have a motion to approve item one point one, the Rise Up Program course of overall? So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Um, Dr. Reynolds, would you like to highlight exactly what this item is this evening?
Yes, in our, in our effort to continue to provide students with opportunity for graduation requirements. Um, we are adopting or we're recommending the adoption of this program. Uh, the RASH program is an introduction to retail. Um, and the curriculum is focused on preparing kids for um, uh, the completion of their CEELs. The CEELs program is uh, something that the state has adopted to help with graduation requirements. Um, this pretty much is assessment of what we're doing. I believe we spoke about this in the last meeting of some of the things that uh, we are trying to do to respond to the needs of students in high school. Um, Ms. Eisen has been working closely with the high school to ensure that there's a solid plan. And this is one of the responses to the plan that she's been developing.
Is there any questions regarding?
One question that I, I did have that I'd asked Dr. Reynolds was about um, the opportunity for uh, internships or externships. The curriculum as uh, as written doesn't have that opportunity. But maybe that's something that we can look into and maybe connect with Y O U or um, some internal partners to see if there's um, opportunities for our scholars to um, utilize their skills. Um, you know, we've got Marks and Giant Eagle and you know, some other retail places right here. Um, locally that they may be able to go in and, and practice those skills if they're learning. Maybe over, cause I know it's a semester, so you know, Christmas break or um, in the summer, be able to, to practice their skills.
There's another partnership that we have recently began and it's going to be headed by uh, Mr. Townsend at the high school. It is the Greater Cleveland Career Council Consortium. Um, where children or students will provide the opportunity to do internships, maybe some job shadowing. Uh, it's more of a career-based opportunity where there's work outside of the building. So that's more consistent with this. Um, this is a straight program just for those to respond to.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And will this um, begin this school year or will students have an opportunity to put this on their schedule this upcoming second semester?
Yes, it's, it's coming up this semester, the second semester. Um, that's why we're working to try to get this in place because we're going to have to, to make some adjustments with some uh, schedule, with student schedules. Some of our students will need this right away, will be changing schedules.
Um, how are we identifying the students? Are students able to just choose this as a pathway? Or are we um, identifying certain students that will benefit more from this um, curriculum? Um, how will we, how, what is the access point for students?
These are some of our hiring students um, who have not been able to uh, either gain their testing points or they are looking for opportunities to, because CEELs is a part of graduation requirements. And we've just recently increased some of our opportunities for CEELs in the, in our last meeting. This is yet another one that will respond to that. So this is one of three that we recently adopted, two, three.
So this is a little bit um, different than those CEELs. Those were our local CEELs that we're going to offer through our school district when we adopted those last month. This is going to help um, students who cannot earn the eighteen points via testing that are necessary for graduation. So students who struggle with the testing, the algebra, and I think the L A two, have the opportunity to find another pathway. One of the other pathways is to participate in an industry credential program. We have students who are at C D C C right now in two-year programs, doing internships, working their way through work keys testing and you know, fulfilling their obligations that way. But we do have a significant number of students who are in limbo. They're taking their tests again right now with the hopes that they can earn the, you know, proficiency score. Um, but if they don't, when we get those scores back, it's a little bit late at that point. So we want to be proactive and enroll these students in this industry credential course. Because we're a public school, not a career tech school, our choices are limited right now with what we can offer. That we don't have a career tech person or a licensed person in that area. So there's programming coming around to help a lot of schools that are in this situation. And this is one of the more commonly used programs. You can see here it's costly, um, but it's worthwhile. The kids have to get twelve hours, which is really difficult to do in a, in a semester. This is um, a program that a lot of schools in the area have used with success. That it's not um, overly time-consuming because the students are still taking their regularly scheduled classes. You know, they're still going to school all day. So they're going to need to do these extra hours in this extracurriculum on their own. So in an attempt to aid in multiple areas, we've decided to create this class. Will follow the established curriculum. Needs to be, um, you know, the students can log in and do it on their own. It's self-paced. And then there's a proctored exam and they'll take an exam every so many units. And the cost involved co, covers the cost of the curriculum as well as the exam for each student. It's ninety-nine dollars for the test. And it's broken up into two halves, so they do a six-credit class and then take the exam. And then they do another six-credit class and take the exam. And with the work that's involved here, they can get the twelve credits and the industry credential that's needed for graduation. So not every kid needs this, it's just an alternative pathway for those who struggle with testing.
But they still haven't passed the test?
They have to pass this test, yes.
And another question, who will be monitoring the students that are enrolled in this course to ensure that they're, it's self-paced?
Mm-hmm.
But we want to make sure that they're moving along?
Absolutely. We have a teacher that we have reassigned for the second semester. She's going to be covering these classes. Um, we spent some time looking through every kid's schedule to see what periods would be best suited for them. It is going to be an elective credit. So if a kid has an elective class right now, we're going to pull them out. We've readjusted her schedule to meet the needs of the vast majority of students so that she can offer four sections of it.
And so they'll actually come into her classroom and work on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And she'll be able to act, she or she?
She, yes.
Will be able to answer questions and?
Yes. She'll guide them right through it. There is a uh, teacher, you know, um, resources packet and we purchased that for her as well.
How many students are we looking to put in this program?
So right now there's about a hundred and eighteen kids who could benefit from it. Um, and so that's, we're starting with every kid. And we're hoping that when we get test scores back next month, um, not every kid will need it. But then they'll have their six credit hours and they'll have this credential that will help them anyway. You can see this particular program, it was developed in conjunction with a lot of major retailers. And it is actually highly regarded. It's something that'll go on their transcript. It's something that they can put on their resume. And it does help them kind of get a leg up in the retail industry.
So when you say every student, you mean a hundred and eighteen? And are these seniors?
Mm-hmm.
Moving forward, Dr. Reynolds, do we have plans or the education um, plan that you shared with us? Will this help us to identify? How do we identify these at-risk students before we get to second semester, twelfth grade?
We're already doing it.
Or do we have something?
We're already doing it.
Cause it seems like a lot, right? For me, because we're talking about was the class of our seniors?
Yes.
Oh, oh, but just so, you know, it'd be nice if we can identify that ninth grader.
Yes.
That's struggling. And then there's things like the learning center to kind of build that gap. Because I don't want our students to just graduate. I want them to be educated. So I want them to make sure that they have the skills that they need in order to be competitive, no matter whether retail may be their decision today, but if they turn around by the summer and decide they want to be college, that they're ready for everything and that we're just not getting kids a diploma, but they're leaving our district educated and competitively educated with peers around. So just, you know, just want to know, I know where we're at and we're supporting our students with this program to get, you know, to bridge some gaps that we have with the district. But moving forward, do we have a plan to identify these students? So we don't have a hundred and eighteen kids at risk at the beginning of second semester?
Yeah, the, the goal is for, for every student to have options at graduation. So it's not just something that they are, this is all I can do. Want it to be something where they have options. If they want to go on to career, they can. If they want to go off to college, they can. They want to go to the military, they can. So that is the optimal goal. But we have to go ahead and start identifying kids a lot earlier in development plans. Every kid walking in the building should have a plan, whether they're on track or not. That is a discussion that I've, I've actually had with the um, with our counselors, just to start creating a plan to identify kids a lot earlier than we have in the past. And we're also looking at a few things that we, we actually saw at uh, one of our conferences recently. Um, where um, um, Compton was actually one of the presenters there. And they used a program through Frontline to help kind of track kids and see where they are um, with regards to on um, on track for graduation, to help identify those kids a lot earlier. So we're looking at a lot of different things, plan that they're developing at the high school now. But we need to dig a little deeper to identify kids a lot earlier. Because we are on the same page. We, we want to make sure that kids, you know, not just kind of completing these things so they can graduate, but they are actually working towards being prepared for the world that they're going to face. So we're, we're all on the same page with that.
Or could this be a, even as we got like maybe ninth graders coming in? That may, I mean, retail can be very lucrative, especially if you move up the management. Um, a lot of people kind of disregard that, but you could make a decent living in retail. Um, I mean, my son works at Walgreens right now, makes fifteen dollars, you know, like, you know, starting off. So um, those are opportunities that are starting to grow because there's a demand. Um, so will maybe next year, a ninth grader that has a desire or other grades or a what grade or eleventh grade? Not that you're at risk, but hey, this is an area that I want to learn more about, develop this skill. And I'm interested in the program. Will it eventually be available to different um, grade levels um, in the future?
That's where the Greater um, Cleveland Career Consortium comes into place. That's a program that's going from eighth to twelve.
Okay.
So it's going to be the introduction piece for the sixth grade.
Okay.
So that is a part of it. Cause you're right, we, we, we have to expose kids a lot earlier than, than usual. And we want to make sure that they have options and, or they're in, they may be interested in something a lot similar. And we can go ahead and put them on that path so they can do more on that. But yes, we, we do have a plan in place. So a plan that we're working on right now to make sure we're, we're identifying opportunities. And we're just identifying kids who are at risk as well.
Is there any other questions or discussions? And thank you both for um, clarifying and answering that question. If there's no other discussion, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Mr. Saluka, can I roll call please?
Yes, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, we will go over our tentative agenda for our regular board meeting that we have determined is going to be scheduled on Tuesday, the seventeenth. Yes. Are there any items on that agenda, Mr. Saluka or Dr. Reynolds, that you would like to highlight to the Board of Education?
From, from a financial standpoint, the only thing that we have is our regular board report for December.
Anything that I go on there or anything? Is there a question?
Yes, Madam President. Um, there's an approval for um, substitutes for, a substitute for the middle school. Is that a um, building sub? Under fourteen point one? It's a third of tomorrow. It looks like she's resigning from one position.
Oh, no, that's me.
And moving to another position. Is it?
So it's not a draft? Or is it active?
It's Kendria Day?
Yes. Can we discuss that?
Is she? Housekeeper?
Yes. She just accepted the position and is?
A building sub?
Yes, so she was, it's not what she thought, but she was still willing to be a substitute. So we're still willing to put her on.
Okay. So she'll be available?
As needed or what they call in as, as available.
But she's through, she's hired by us?
She was hired by us last month or, yes.
Um, the parent handbook? This is for this school year? We didn't have, were there additions or corrections? Or did we not approve one at the beginning of the school year, eighteen point one?
No, that we've been working on making adjustments to ensure that it's consistent with our system. I don't think that we approved one at the beginning of the year. So this is something that has wanted to be several answers to make sure that we are um, consistent with what we have in our handbook and what we have in our system. That's been the work that they've been doing for some time now. Just to make sure we're, we're consistent with what we're, we're. consistent with what we're writing or putting in the system than what the handbook actually says. There's more work to be done on that, including some work that we're going to be moving forward with, with going directly into the system using progress books for disciplines. And it's just making sure we're consistent in both areas we have.
Have the changes in the updating of the student and parent handbook been reviewed with the equity plans?
Yes, it was the last hands who, actually throughout the process and at the very end, split it around.
And it's in alignment with the board's equity policies? Is there any other questions? Regarding the tentative agenda at the same time? If there's no other questions, our next item on our agenda. We did, we do a lot of work. Is the Board of Education training update? Was there any other training that was conducted? And then next item is other matters of the board. The only other matter that I just kind of wanted to brief everybody on is that we discussed about, after coming back from the OSVA, there was a model that we seen that addressed board members' presence and engagement in the school buildings regularly. And we talked about how we could effectively distribute those opportunities amongst board members and our school buildings. So we talked about each of the board members, since we have five buildings, that we take on a commitment to build a relationship with those buildings and those families and make sure that we have an equitable presence at all of our buildings. And the purpose is not for oversight, it's just to, for engagement purposes. So just to engage with our students, our staff, our leadership, our parents, and those who are the stakeholders of those particular buildings. So I've asked Dr. Reynolds to kind of develop some framework for the board members to do that because we don't want to cross any lines. We want to be collaborative in nature and more of an engagement role and allow Dr. Reynolds to oversee. So just want to make sure that we have those parameters in place and that our buildings have that understanding that it's the purpose of just simply engagement and nothing more. So Dr. Reynolds is going to reach out to each board member after he meets with his principals. And our first level will be in the month of January, scheduling the lunch or something with the principals, having a discussion on just kind of where they at and where they would like to see the engagement, along with our desires and our vision for engagement. And then have a good time enjoying our staff, our students, and the buildings here in our district. I'm looking forward to it just being a fulfilling opportunity for all of us and all of us that are able to touch it. So Dr. Reynolds will be reaching out to everyone within the week, correct?
Yes.
To see your availability and meet with the principals. And then from there, you guys are framing what it looked like based upon the principal and Dr. Reynolds' vision for our engagement. So, I don't know, I think, oh, I went to that meeting that brought that back, it was a great ideal and I'm glad, I'm excited about having that opportunity more structured, so, thank you guys. Is there any other matters or anything else? I think one other thing, just to kind of put on you guys' radar, is city council president shared a desire to do a joint work session with the Board of Education to kind of discuss some various, just kind of collaborate, a collaborative effort and kind of sit down and have some conversations to kind of build a relationship between the Board of Education and our city council and that leadership, just as an effort to kind of build that bridge and bond between the two entities. And so that we can maybe develop a key focus amongst key government, the government leadership in our city so that we could be supportive of the efforts and know exactly where they're at on matters and you know exactly where we at because we have a joint desire to improve our community as a whole and serve our community as a whole. So I'll probably be meeting with whoever is appointed president of city council to establish that and probably, that'll probably happen during the month of February, during a public work session. I'm not sure if it's going to be our work session or their work session, so we'll kind of figure all that out. Is anybody opposed to that request? Oh, anybody figure out what our schedule is going to be for our book study?
Does everyone have their books?
Yes. They don't have it all, why are you going to ask them? Really?
I've already read a book this year though.
This year?
Yeah.
January? Okay, you got this, you could do this.
Well, we won't have that kind of stringent timeline on you. This time is what I do want us to have an area in our work session in February where we have some discussion, but I understand everybody busy, but I don't want to be doing this all day neither, so.
It's eight chapters. So how about we read a chapter a month and discuss?
I'm going to read this to the chapter.
It ain't that many, Ashley.
No, I'm just saying she'll be due too. I got eight people in school, you know.
A chapter, a chapter. I mean, you can go ahead if you would like. And then that you have to read it and stuff, listen to it. And maybe by the time we get to one of the chapters, it got audio. The book is only two hundred and fourteen, right? So, a chapter a month. We can figure out if we move it through a little faster, we can adjust as we get through it. But we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to be successful. And this is a new endeavor for us doing a book study, so I think one chapter a month, sure that we are successful and we're taking small bites of it as we go along because there's going to be other work we need to do, so. So by next school year, we have these skills. So have chapter one read by our February work session. And if not, just move. Just jump in the conversation somewhere. There's no test. At this time, is there any other matters today?
Just real quick, following up, I meant to bring copies. I did send a thank you letter to Mrs. Regario for her donation to the Anthony Regario Scholarship Fund. Send email out with showing the, a copy of that letter.
All right, thank you. That was so generous and very appreciative. Well, at this time, can I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel matters as of seven twenty-three? So don't move. Mr. Sulukka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. The motion to enter into executive session at seven twenty-three P M to discuss personnel matters. Can I call please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen? Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, we are entering into executive session as of seven twenty-three, seven twenty-four P M for the purposes of discussing personnel matters. Who do we need in the executive?